You come in sleep uncomfortably in the lumber room which-
Okay, I'd like to call to order the June 14th, 2017, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes?
No, I'm making motion to be approved.
Okay, Dennis is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Two abstentions, okay. And just for your information, oh, probably six months ago or maybe a year ago, we did have a discussion about if you've read the minutes, even if you weren't here, you're certainly welcome to participate in the vote or other votes that you're informed on even if you missed a meeting, so. Anyway, moving on, is there any correspondence from staff?
None from staff this evening.
Okay. And Joel is not here tonight, so we don't, I don't think unless Walter can give us an update on the Transportation Commission, you don't have anything to do with it. So, okay. So we'll table that one. So the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment. It's a 15-minute period that we set aside for members of the public to come and speak to us about issues that you might be considering that aren't currently before us. And so if, is there any, are there any takers for speaking in the public comment? Okay. Well, now we're going to move on to item five, which is, we're going to open a public hearing in a few minutes, but we're going to start with the sunny, it's the Palouse Prairie addition and Sunnyside Avenue properties.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So before you tonight, we have a public hearing for the request of Moscow Affordable Housing Trust for the Palouse Prairie addition preliminary plat. So just to familiarize yourself with the property, on the center of your screen outlined in red, we've got Palouse River Drive there to the south, running east-west. We've got Sunnyside currently terminates about right here. You have an undeveloped portion, but it's currently platted as Sunnyside Avenue. And then you have that picking up here, I guess would be the northern terminus off of Victoria Drive Anderson First Edition neighborhood. So currently vacant, we have numerous land uses that surround it. Anderson Frontier Park is located directly to the west of the property. We have Prospect Place addition, which is a single-family neighborhood to the southwest. Vacant piece of property here to the southeast. You have Gritman Wellness Center, which is across Sunnyside there to the far east. And then you have various uses on the south side of Palouse River Drive. This would be ITD's maintenance yard here, and you have a mobile home park here to the southeast. Just a closer view of the property. You can see Sunnyside Avenue, the two lines where you have right-of-way going through that property that separate the property here to the southeast with the subject property. Looking at the topography in the area, every line represents a two-foot contour elevation change. So you have the elevations called out here, so 2,600 feet, and every five lines would represent 10 feet of elevation change. So you've got quite a bit of elevation, about 10% slope as you head to the north, and then there's some slope as you head down to Anderson Frontier Park to the west side. So the proposal's a subdivision of 3.69 acre. It's currently a combination of the R3 and the R4 zoning districts. Proposal is subdivided into 13 lots ranging in sides from a little over 2,000 square feet to 2.36 acres. Also included are eight townhouse lots within this, so two four-unit clusters of townhouses. You've got two flag lots, as well as two standard internal lots. And then a larger lot to the very far west, 2.36 acres in size, that was approved earlier this year for a conditional use permit for Palouse Prairie Charter School. Taking a look at the comp plan designation, it's currently designated as auto-urban residential. Prospect Place to the southwest is neighborhood conservation, as well as Anderson First Edition to the north is neighborhood conservation as well. You're looking at a few different zones, urban residential with a vacant property to the southeast, as well as all the properties to the south of Palouse River Drive. Anderson Frontier Park's currently designated as parks and open space. So what does the auto-urban residential designation say within the comp plan? It's usually low to moderate density residential uses, typically see about three to seven units per acre, contains a mixture of single-family townhome and limited multifamily. And appropriate designations include R1 through R3 zones. Sunnyside is a local neighborhood street, and Palouse River Drive's a minor arterial. So looking at the zoning configuration, so as I mentioned earlier, you have two zoning districts. You have the R3 zone, which is medium-density residential that splits the property in half to the north. And then you've got an R4 zone, which is multifamily residential on the south half of the property, as well as the properties to the southwest and the southeast. And Gritman Wellness Center is also zoned multifamily residential. All the properties to the north and to the west are in R1, which is low-density, single-family residential. R3 zone provides for an increase over the density allowed by R2. Appropriate where activity levels are moderate, terrain permits construction of somewhat larger structures, and where public systems and neighborhood facilities can accommodate a greater intensity of land use guided by the comp plan. So the common uses that you see permitted within R3 are really run the gamut of all residential uses with the exception of multifamily. So we allow single-family, two-family, twin homes, and townhouses within the R3 zone. Minimum lot size varies by the type of use, so single-family, 6,000 square feet; two-family, 7,000; twin homes require 3,250 square feet; townhouses are a minimum of 2,000. There is a caveat to the townhouse, 2,000 square feet underneath the R3 zone. It must not exceed 14.5 dwelling units per acre, even though you're able to go down to 2,000 square feet in size. So the entire townhouse development wouldn't be able to exceed that density. So that's the restriction that we have that's unique to the R3 zone. And then we have minimum lot width requirements, single-family and two-family is 60 feet, twin homes are 30 feet, and townhouses, you're able to go down to 20 feet in width. Moving on to the R4 zone, really provides for the most intense residential land uses in the community. So it's meant to be applied where activity levels are high and adequate public facilities are available, especially near the University of Idaho campus or the central business zoning district. And then we also look at adequate transportation access and giving high priority when looking at an appropriate land for R4 zone. And then uses, really the same as the R3 zone, with the exception, we allow multifamily development, as well as professional offices, up to 2,000 square feet in size. Minimum lot size grouping the single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings, it's 5,000 square feet or 800 square feet per dwelling, whichever is greater. Twin homes require 2,250 square feet; townhouses are 1,800 square feet. And then the minimum lot width for the single, two, and multi would be 50 feet; twin homes are 25, and townhouses are 18. So that brings us to our proposed plat. So we have 13 parcels. This is the larger 2.36 acre parcel here to the west. This was the parcel that was previously approved for a conditional use permit earlier this year for Palouse Prairie Charter School. And then you have mid-block, these would be the, that's one set of the four townhouse clusters. So these would be the western townhouses, and then you have some eastern townhouses. They're primarily within the R3 zone, they're a little bit larger lot areas and widths. And then you have a couple of flag lots. So we have a flagpole access drive, and it widens out into the flaglot here to the north. You also have another flaglot here to the east with the access drive, and then widening out to the larger lot to the north. And then you have two over 7,000-square-foot internal lots here and here. So we have 13 parcels. Like I mentioned before, you have that 2.36 acre parcel where the CUP was approved earlier this year. The townhouse lots, the westernmost is primarily R4, so you have a little bit of overlap between the zones that transect the townhouse lots. You have an average lot size of 27, about 2,700 square feet and a total density of 15.6 dwelling units per acre. The easternmost is primarily in the R3, and we see average lot sizes of those four townhouse lots at about 3,200 square feet and total density of 13.3 dwelling units per acre. So that meets the 14.5 limitation that we do have in the R3 zone. Looking at a combination, so the entire townhouse development to see how it relates to that 14.5, even though the westernmost are almost entirely within the R4 zone, so that really won't apply to the, those westerly four, they still meet the 14.5. So they still come in underneath that with about an average lot size of around 3,000 square feet and a total density of 14.4 dwelling units per acre. Street network, Sunnyside, this was previously platted as part of Anderson First Edition. It's currently classified as a local neighborhood street within our thoroughfare plan and the comp plan, and it is under, all this property is currently underneath the development agreement that was part of the Anderson First subdivision, requires Sunnyside to be constructed prior to any building permits to be issued on any of these proposed parcels. And then Sunnyside will be constructed to the, to match the current standard that was approved at the time Anderson First subdivision was approved. So a little bit different than our current street standards. This only requires curb gutter, tree lawn, and sidewalk on the north side of the street, and then just curb and gutter on the south side. Almost all Anderson First Edition has that same configuration with just sidewalks on one side of the street. Utilities, looking at the water system in the area, you currently have mains stubbed to the current, two current terminuses of Sunnyside. It's proposed to extend along the Sunnyside Avenue alignment. And then looking at the 2012 comprehensive water system plan, Public Works has reviewed that and determined that the existing system is adequate potable on fire flows to serve this proposed development. And then sanitary and storm sewer are similar, and what needs to be done to extend those. There are mains that will need to be extended along the Sunnyside Avenue alignment, much like the water system, from that northeast corner along Sunnyside, and then they'll eventually tie in to existing mains near the intersection of Sunnyside and Pearl Circle, which is Prospect Place, one of their streets that comes out on the Sunnyside. So both mains are currently right, right there in the street. And then looking at what the 2011 comprehensive sewer system plan says, Public Works has determined that the existing system's adequate to serve the additional flow that could potentially be generated from this subdivision. Dwight Curtis, our Parks and Rec Director, has reviewed the subdivision and determined that the original parkland dedication for the Anderson and Frontier subdivisions covered this piece of property, and so Anderson Frontier Park was part of the Anderson Frontier additions. And so they had already satisfied the parkland dedication as part of that subdivision. So there's no further dedication required as part of this. Staff's recommendation is that the commission conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval, the preliminary plat to City Council with no conditions. And then to direct staff to prepare the relevant criterion standards document for review at the next meeting. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Any Commissioners have any questions? Okay, I guess not. So we're going to open the public hearing and, oh, you did have one.
Madam Chair, yes, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to disclose before we have the public hearing-
Oh, right, right, right.
-that about three months ago, Nils and I had a chance encounter. We briefly discussed the project. None of the discussion related to the issues that are before planning and zoning tonight, but I wanted to have it on the record that we had had that discussion.
So noted, thank you. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite, I guess initially, the applicant to come up and speak, Nils Peterson. And would ask everybody who comes to speak to identify themselves and give us your address, please.
Thank you very much. This is going to be fun. I've been on your side of the table, and now I'm over here.
So I learned how to conduct a public hearing from you, so if I screw up, I can-
I will not be correcting you. I want to also thank and recognize Scott Becker from Hodg and Associates, who did the engineering work on this project, and Scott has been a professional friend and consultant to me. I've really appreciated working with him. What I, for the record, my name is Nils Peterson. I am the Executive Director of the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust, address 510 West Palouse River Drive, Moscow. I want to walk you through what I hope will be a little bit of professional learning and thinking goes with this project. Mike did a lovely job of presenting the project itself. I have some insights that I think you might find interesting. Certainly when I was on P&amp;Z, we talked about a number of kinds of development issues, and tonight we're talking about growth in Moscow. Any plat is an addition to the city, and it's a subject of growth. So I want you to think about this, regards to your relevant criterion standards, the proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare. Staff has already indicated that water sewer and storm systems are adequate to serve the needs of the subdivision. But there's a welfare question that I don't think is addressed yet, and that is, what burden does the development impose on the capacity of the city to maintain its infrastructure? Not for the infrastructure to function, but for it to continue to function, to be able to maintain it. When I first met Debbie Spurgeon, who is the broker at Team Idaho, and started to work for the housing trust, she told me this, "You can't put a small house on an expensive lot." And I'm the kind of guy who does not respond well to can't. And so I have been trying to figure out either why that is true or how to do it. And so we're going to take a tour through why I believe Debbie is correct, though I wouldn't have stated it the way she does. This is an interesting project because of the scope of my involvement with it. It began at the point where I was in a position to negotiate a price for the raw land, and that started, Palouse Prairie School had opened a conversation with the seller and was working on identifying the parcel that, then they started, "I will buy the whole thing," and then they realized they couldn't afford it. And I got in on it, and I said, "Look, you draw a line wherever you want to draw a line. I'll take what's left." Which wasn't the optimal way to get a piece of land, but it's how I got in. And then it was like, okay, what is that? How many lots might be there? What price might work and be affordable? So I started there. Then I was able to participate in the negotiations around the infrastructure development. There were a couple of different strategies used, but I got to see the inner workings of the money on the infrastructure piece. And then, most interesting, and I'm sorry, Nils isn't here, Wendy, you would enjoy this, doing architecture where you're also designing the plat simultaneously is a very different experience. You say, "Well, let's make the house a foot wider." "Oh, that ripples all the way up the block. What do we do now?" "Oh, well, then we ripple back down when..." So I got to do both things simultaneously. Lawrence Rose retired from Design West, and I got him in Moment of Weakness, and he's the staff architect for the housing trust. And we worked a long time, and then kept going back to Scott and burning hours. Thankfully, I think he's been very fair with the price, to actually draw up what we were doing on the backs of envelopes and things and make sure that it would work. So I've gotten to see the whole scope of this project. So thinking about infrastructure and the price of the lot, the sale price somehow has to be the cost of the land, the cost to development, and a profit. In the case of the housing trust, we're able to make things more affordable by putting zero in for profit. But thinking of the general picture, what I know about the road is that it costs about $680 a linear foot to build all that Mike described, curb gutter, sidewalk, tree lawn, and the whole road, with all the sewer and all the stuff underground as well. Here's a thing that has been slow for me to understand. There is no obvious connection between the price of the lot and the development costs. The only thing that you're pretty sure is that you hope the sale price of all the lots is greater than the costs of the inputs. But any given lot, the lots are valued by the market in a variety of ways, by their size, by the length of their frontage, if it's a steep hillside, does it have a view, et cetera. The other thing to think about is that development costs will be paid by the homeowner. We like to say, "Well, we're going to make the developer build the road." Well, yeah, the developer will cause the road to be built, but the cost of the road will be built into the lot, probably into the mortgage, and so we end up with private borrowing by the homeowner paying to build the public infrastructure. I'm still wrapping my head around, around that, because it's a donation of the private buyer to the city in effect. So let's talk about maintaining this new road that we're just about to build. I went to see Tyler Palmer, and I got quite an education about the whole issues of road maintenance in the city. And I went to him with two questions. What is the cost to maintain a road per year? And what is the expected lifespan of that road? I already know something in today's dollars of what it takes to build that road. So, but what I didn't know is how long the road that I'm about to build would be good. First thing I learned is, let's exclude the utilities. That is, sewer, water, and soon-to-be storm utilities will have mechanisms that supposedly are structured to pay for them. So that leaves the asphalt piece of the road, the sidewalk piece of the road, as unpaid for by a direct mechanism. So this is what I got from Tyler, and it's interesting, the cost of this, the money for all of this is in a variety of different budgets, and he's pulling together pieces. But $43.50 a square yard is what it costs to maintain the road over its lifespan of 32 years. The road we're about to build is just under 2,000 squared yards in front of 12 house lots. So I've shortened this a little bit to take off the piece that's in front of the Palouse Prairie access. The $1,898 is in front of just the 12 lots that we're talking about. So that's $41,000 a year for the cost for half the road, for the 30, $41,000 is the cost to maintain half the road for 32 years. Half the road because presumably there's a landowner on the other side who's going to be responsible for maintaining the other half of the road somehow. That's $1,290 a year, or $2.64 a linear foot of road maintenance cost. And then you add snow removal. That was a new concept to me. $2,000 per lane mile per year is what we spend on snow removal on average. That's 38 cents per foot per year. So it's a total of $3.02 per linear foot per year is the average cost for each of the next 32 years. One of the wrinkles is this is in today's dollars. But everything's in today's dollars. If it all inflates roughly the same, then the numbers should stay roughly in balance. Obviously, if it inflates differently, if the price of road maintenance goes up differently than the price of houses, then this story will get a little bit out of balance. But if we kind of look at a snapshot of today, so how do you pay for maintenance? There's three sources. There's gas tax. Leita sanitation, I learned, makes a contribution, because they run big, heavy trucks all over the city all the time, and so they make a contribution to the wear and tear. And then the general fund is used to pick up the slack. So now I want to talk about three of the lots in this subdivision, lots seven, eight, and nine. Twelve, the flagpole, is kind of an anomaly, but in terms of thinking about more typical city lots, seven, eight, and nine. One is 28 feet wide, one is 36 feet wide, and one is, got 92 feet of frontage because it's on the curve. You could also think that that was sort of like a corner lot, where the lot might have a lot more street around it because it had streets on two sides. So, thinking about paying for road maintenance. My target to build an affordable house is to build a house that sells for $175,000. That's below the median price of a Moscow house by quite a bit, but it's at the top end of what our buyers can afford. Our buyers are folks who earn between 50 and 80% of the area median income. For a family of four, that's between $30,000 and $50,000 a year as a gross income. They are my friends and neighbors, they hold jobs, they can get loans, they pay on their debts, all of those things. It's just that they have that more limited budget to work with. And when you take that income and you put it through the sort of typical process that a lender does, you come out with being able to afford that if they don't have too many student loans and too many car payments and those other sorts of things. So I'm trying to build a property whose value will be $175,000. Take off the homeowner exemption, you get the tax value, you multiply by the tax rate to get what they would have as taxes. But the thing to look at here is, the maintenance cost per year, obviously, for the narrower lot is less than for the wider lot, because we learned it's $3.02 per linear foot. And thinking about the maintenance cost as a fraction of the property tax, I'm not sure, that property tax now number is not only what goes to the city, but it's what goes to the county, it's what goes to the library district, it goes to the cemetery, all those uses. So that property tax gets distributed a lot of ways, and one would want to dig in a lot further to see the implications of that maintenance cost relative to the tax value that's used for roads. So Lawrence and I were having this conversation. I was arguing to him that these narrow lots are good, because they are going to yield more tax value to the city to make their maintenance. He says, "Oh, well, let's just double it, and we'll put the two lots together, 28 and 36 is 64, and we'll just build a bigger house on it." Well, those won't be affordable houses, but as you look at what happens as the property value marches up, let's see if I can make this work without hosing everything. There's the 175 house, that's the small house on the expensive lot. "You can't do that," says Debbie Spurgeon. And, and the reason is that it is, the taxes that it pays relative to the maintenance costs, it doesn't pay very, there's a higher burden, because the maintenance costs are relatively high to the taxes it pays. In order to get down to sort of a similar number, the average of those two, 5.9, you've got to be somewhere in here, you need a $300,000 house on that 64-foot-wide lot. The median house price in Moscow right now is running between, somewhere between 200,000 and 250,000. It's two and a quarter is the last one I saw. Okay, so there's that. Now let's think about the 92-foot-wide, the upper lot. Those, we have the same sort of problem. When you put the cheap house on that lot, it really doesn't do a good job of paying its share in taxes. And you have to run up here to somewhere in the 300,000 to 350,000 to get a house with enough taxable value to make a similar contribution to what these houses are contributing. That is, paying relatively more for using, for the amount of resource that they're using. Now, here's the big bugaboo. Paying for road replacement. You'll recall, I know the cost of the road in today's dollars. And so thinking about half the cost of the road per foot times the lot width, this is what it will cost to replace half the road in front of one 28-foot lot. And in front of the 36-foot lot, it costs $12,000. And in front of the 36-foot lot, it costs $12,000. And think about that in terms of, this is the road cost relative to the total value of the property, relative to the $175,000. Looked at on the 64-foot, when Lawrence says, "Let's combine them and put bigger houses on," it takes, again, a $300,000 house to get anywhere near 300,000-plus, the same road cost to total value ratio. And on the 92-foot lot, it takes a really valuable house to make a similar ratio. So, I know when I was here, we read some things by the folks from Strong Towns, and I don't know if you've continued to read it. It's an interesting organization. One of Charles Marone's articles, maybe a year or two ago, it was triggered by somebody asking about, "What's the right density for your town?" He says, "It's not about density. It's about the ratio of public to private value." Or, private to public value. That is, this ratio on the previous screen of the amount of value in the house versus the amount of value in the road, which is actually, he looks at as a liability to the city. City has to rebuild that road at some point. So, the better the ratio of private to public, the easier it is going to be to sustain the road over time, to replace it. So, this is rewording Debbie Spurgeon. You can't put an inexpensive house on a large lot. Or, you can't put on one that has lots of public infrastructure. So, observations from the case study. It would be fiscally prudent to increase the ratio of the private value to the public liability by narrowing our street standards, perhaps with less on-street parking. Then, our cost to rebuild the road, cost to maintain the road per foot would go down. So, the relative value of the private investment to the public investment would be better. If we allowed smaller minimum lot sizes, particularly perhaps width, would make the relative value of the house to the infrastructure it supported more favorable. If we had a cap on the maximum lot size, that 92-foot frontage on that lot might not get a $400,000 house on it. If it doesn't, it doesn't do nearly as well at paying its way for both maintenance and replacement later on. And the issue there, what it comes down to, is if you come to a homeowner, you're gonna do an LID to replace their street. And you say, "You've got a $200,000 house, and it's gonna cost you $5,000." Is that a ratio that the homeowner will buy? You say, "You've got a $200,000 house, it's gonna cost you $20,000." There is some level of tax for that LID that the homeowner will not vote for. And it's when you cross over that that the Strong Towns folks argue, that you get into trouble. You can no longer generate the revenue to maintain your infrastructure. So, keeping that private value high and the public liability low makes the greatest chance that you'll be able to get the revenue you need to maintain the public infrastructure. Another strategy would be to allow creative division of existing lots, or other strategies, for example, the ADUs, to increase the private value on our existing lots. I think that there are a lot of places in Moscow, you could do this same analysis on existing lots. You would find a lot of places in Moscow where the property may not be able to support the infrastructure in front of it. And certainly, when you add the infrastructure that is shared, think about Mountain View. It's a lot of Mountain View without houses on it. So, somebody has to be paying for Mountain View, which means all of us are paying for it in some way. So, it's not just the foot of pavement in front of my house, it's times a multiplier to pay for the pieces that have parks beside them and other things. So, Debbie's right. That is, you, the P and Z, should not be encouraging the putting of small houses on expensive lots. Thank you. I'll take questions.
Can you send those slides?
Mike has them. You can send them.
Great.
That was a fascinating presentation.
Yeah.
Don't know if it has anything to do with our decision directly, but it was very interesting in the economics of how that works.
It might cause you to expand how you think about general welfare. As things are currently structured, I don't think we have a way to include it. But, maybe it should be included, or maybe it would be informative to making some changes into the zoning code that would move us in the direction of naturally, by right, supporting the general welfare better.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any questions for Nils?
Other ones?
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak, so I think in favor of the proposed project? Scott, you're not gonna present? Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, would anyone like to come and comment either against, or perhaps neutrally about the project? Yes. So, you need to come up here, please, and state your name and address.
Robert Cooper, 1971 Anderson Place. So, lots directly behind the proposed area. I would agree with Mr. Dickinson that it's a bit confused in how a lot of the material related to what we're doing. There wasn't much discussion of the actual, the development and how things would be built. Mostly, kind of large-scale numbers and things. Some of the, like, average numbers, price per square foot and lots and things aren't really relevant to a particular area where we are. For instance, the property directly behind the proposed area, the most recent house sold for near $400,000. So, putting, you know, tables up with, you know, sort of a really high end of the spectrum, being in that range, I didn't really get why things were kind of framed that way. I get, in the overall idea of development for the city, it kind of makes sense, but for this particular thing, didn't really make sense as to why all these ideas were framed this way. So, I would have liked to see a presentation that had more to do with our neighborhood and how things are going to be built right there than this, what we saw today. I think I sort of have an overall question of why it's presented this way to this group as, instead of speaking more to, you know, what's more specific to our neighborhood and how this will affect people who actually live there and deal with the development there.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Could I have a question?
I have a question. In your comments at the neighborhood meeting, you were concerned about the grading and potential impact of the view of your house. Could you describe that a little bit more, please?
There's one thing that I was concerned about because of everything that was presented, and things were presented well, for the most part, and pretty well drawn out, except for one thing that was sort of hand-drawn. I don't know if you guys, do you have that? Sort of hand-drawn crudely.
Oh, the lot.
As to how the row houses would be built with daylight basements to maximize square footage. It was sort of crudely hand-drawn in a way that you couldn't tell how high those structures would end up being. There is a zoning restriction, and it was presented that, this is R3, R4, but it was zoned that way with a restriction of being one-story, which is important to the people who live there. And I don't mind saying, particularly me, I live right above there. And so, not being able to see with any degree of certainty how high those structures might be is a big deal. I can, if we could go back to those, or if we looked at, like, plot, the plot 12, I could drop a baseball off my deck without throwing it, just dropping it straight and hit that plot. So, knowing, you know, how high that's gonna come up is, values me, is important to me, and the value of the property that purchased and all that. I guess that's one of the things I'm kind of surprised with this presentation, I was expected to get more specifics in this, more things relevant to the actual plan of this development, not sort of general things, yeah.
Well, do you want to explain, address that real quick, Mike?
Well, this is really a subdivision plat, and so it's just a division of property. The zoning on the property really sets the allowed uses. And so, you run the gamut of really any use that's allowed in the R3 or R4 zone being permitted on any of those properties. So, we just make sure that each of those lots that are proposed meets the minimum lot size and lot width, and then the special circumstances that you speak of, you know, will dictate a lot of the height of the buildings that end up getting built there. So, you know, back in 1994, there was a rezon on this property to, we end up with the current configuration of the R3 and R4. And then there was special, the council at the time put special conditions to say that the height of structures within those particular properties, or this property, are limited to single-story in height exclusive of basements. So, like Prospect Place addition to the southwest. They're all single-story, but they have daylight basements coming out just because of the topography. It's likely that the townhouse-
Is there an overall height, though? I mean, just like we have 35 feet?
No, it's just single-story. It's just single-story. So, as long as there's not two stories, you know, presumably, they could have a vaulted ceiling in the living room that could go up to 20, 25 feet. But, you're dealing with topography where the daylighting would be coming off, since they're on the north side of Sunnyside and the topography slopes up from there, you'd be dealing with a situation where they'd be placed in the slope, and they'd be daylighting out the front, instead of daylighting in the rear where you traditionally have, you know, a rancher-style house with a daylight basement coming out the back. And so, that would be the configuration of a townhouse design in order to be able to fit a garage and, you know, a story or two of livable space. But, really, that's not before us tonight. It's more just the plat and whether or not it meets the requirements of the zones. And then, you know, the zoning has already dictated what could be built there and the special restrictions. So, we're not really supposed to get into reviewing what's proposed to be built there.
So, what are we exactly doing? What are we looking at and doing?
We're looking at the subdivision of property and the rezoning of it, or the, not rezoning of it, but subdivision of it, the plating of it, rather than more like what you would see in a planned unit development where you actually see footprints that were, you know, like we did with identity or something like that. So, that's one of the conundrums as planning and zoning commissioners that we face, is we, you know, we don't really know, we don't really control, or we don't make advisement on exactly what the architecture will be on the site. It's just how the land is subdivided in access to some-
Do you look at the why? Like, do you look back to, okay, historically, why this one-story restriction was put in the first place? Because it's, for instance, if there's an exception or some sort of restriction put on, it must have been for reason, right? So, you could look at the, okay, this is R3, R4 with this restriction, let's move on. Would you be interested in the why, why the restriction is put on?
Regardless of the restriction-
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Cooper, there are relevant criterion standards that we have to look at. There are four of them. They're put in, they're in the packet, if you saw that. One of them is that we have to decide that the proposed subdivision will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Do you believe it will be, the subdivision, not what might be built on it, because that's not before us. But, the division would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare.
That wasn't my question.
Well, but that's what we have to consider. That's what I'm asking you, if you believe that this will be detrimental to-
No, no, I don't.
Okay. And I'm not trying to argue with you, but we have things we have to consider, and those are the four things.
Yes.
So, if you have something that would inform us on that, then-
I responded to the question that was given, and then responded to the response that was given.
Well, thank you. Anybody, did you have any more comments, or are you?
I-
Or you have a question, Brock?
I have a question for Mr. Cooper. Being that we're just in the very preliminary plat stages, they didn't present any sort of potential blueprints or anything to you, did they?
We had a-
Any of these meetings?
We had a neighborhood meeting a month or so ago?
Six weeks.
Six weeks ago, yeah. And looked at the plats and looked at the proposal of the eight row houses and two different structures, also the proposal of the other lots, and sort of the idea behind all of that. So, I think I got a lot more information at that meeting than I did at this one, actually, that's actually relevant to the development, you know, that we're actually talking about. That's why I said I was kind of surprised there wasn't more information at this one.
What additional information did you get? Because we, Mike gave a presentation pretty much of what, you know, we have all reviewed before we came to the meeting, and so. You said something about renderings or something?
Tim, do you feel like-
Yes.
So, knowing your conundrum tonight, you're dealing with the division of land. The neighborhood meeting, we provided the plat drawing. But, to address this question, I also provided a section through one of the proposed townhouses. It was still very much a sketch section, but to try to help the neighbors understand, because I view the neighborhood meeting as a very different kind of conversation than tonight's, to help the neighbors understand how the structures might sit, how we would recognize this one-story plus daylight basement in a design, and so provided a section that showed how that might work. So, that's the difference. And so, I think I can understand how a neighbor would say, "Well, you shared that then."
Right. But, it's not relevant to what we're considering tonight.
But, sorry, it's not relevant to tonight's effort, so I did not bring it tonight.
So, is that clear at all, that we are really just considering the subdivision of land tonight, we're not looking at-
We're not approving houses.
Right.
Okay.
It's not our role to do that, so. Okay. Well, thank you. Anybody else like to come and speak, or would you like an opportunity, again, to respond, Nils? Anything more you'd like to add? Okay, no one else would like to speak? Okay. Well, I'm gonna close the public hearing then, and we'll have some internal discussion and vote.
So, I'd kind of like to follow up on that question about, yeah, there was a restriction put on there that it'd be R3 and R4, but limited to one story. Do, I mean, do we ever take into account of, do we have enough information to take into account why that restriction was put on there? Well, do we know why that restriction was put on there, and do we take it into account at a hearing like this? account at a, at a hearing like this?
Well, certainly we can talk about the restriction that's in place, but as far as the plat, you know, it shouldn't have any effect on the plat, or the reasons why it was put in place should really have no bearing. It's, it is what it is, that you have the restrictions that are placed upon that rezon. The only way to remove those restrictions are to go through, back through the rezon process in order to remove the conditions. The applicant chose not to do that, but to proceed with the current configuration. So, um, you know, it's my understanding at the time that those were placed on there because it used to be Leita Care, you know, when it was pretty much Leita, I think, Health Care Center, was more of a, an elderly facility. And so they had originally planned Prospect Place as more of a, kind of like Good Samaritan type situation, where you have some, uh, single-family, two-family houses, and then you have the, kind of more of a multifamily facility. So they had originally planned it to evolve from there, and it just never ended up happening that way. And I think those were part of the restrictions that were placed on it, was to further limit it to, um, you know, elderly people that were, were going to move into that neighborhood. And so I think that that's primarily why they placed those conditions on those lots. But really shouldn't pertain to anything tonight, other than there's those conditions that exist on those two zones, so.
Are there questions or comments?
I, Madam Chair, Mike, I am, um, I'm very confused and, and I'm very concerned about Mr. Cooper's predicament, about the possibility of somehow having a giant one-story structure that is going to take away the natural beauty that the other homes enjoy in that area. Mike, would there be another opportunity during any future processes where Mr. Cooper would have the opportunity to better make his case, where we would have the opportunity as a commission to determine what sort of structures are placed in this potential plat, height-wise? If that makes any sense?
Well, it's really the zoning that covers this property. So, you know, I, I wouldn't say that, you know, I, I think you certainly could impose a condition on the plat, but what justification you would have? So the, the properties to the north have an overall height limitation of thirty-five feet. And so what makes those properties different than this property, I think, is what you would have to ask yourself. And, you know, I mean, if, if there's a special condition on those properties that affect this property, or vice versa, you know, I think you would have to make a, a clear statement why, what the, you know, what the issue is there.
When I've seen restrictions for single-story, it's really, it was more in, in other zoning codes, like in Port Townsend, for example, in places they have, and it's really to protect views. It's seventeen feet in height, and that, uh, you can't really do a two-story house unless you have a total flat roof or, or pretty recessed basement, you know. But I, I would think that, you know, it would be, um, with the one-story restriction, certainly surrounded by thirty-five-foot houses that go up with pretty full roof slopes is, you know, would be pretty restrictive. I don't see a, a really large building being able to come out of that. Yes?
I mean, if you look at the R four zone, it's, it has a maximum height of forty feet. R three, R three has thirty-five feet. You don't have to do anything special, that's just the, the height that you can go up to. And so it's already limited to a single story with a daylight basement. So in my mind, that's already overly restrictive on this piece of property for what the underlying zone is, so I don't know how-
Yeah, we just don't have that circumstance, and we don't protect views in our, our zoning code, really, basically, we don't. Some jurisdictions do, but we-
Correct.
I'm not aware that we do, yeah. So, not saying that they shouldn't be, but they just, we don't, we don't have it in our code, so.
This all seems to relate to the lot number twelve. Is that going to all, can I, can I ask?
Yes, yes, Nels.
Um, is, were you thinking of continuing the townhouse development on those other lots as well?
The lots eleven and twelve?
Correct.
The two flagpole lots.
So I guess I'm-
So that means they have narrow frontage on the street, but they-
Right, right. But they back up to the neighbors.
Correct.
I don't know what will happen.
Okay, so you don't have specific plans for those lots?
I do not have specific plans for those lots.
And do they, those lots have the one-story restriction as well, or no?
Correct.
Yes, they do.
Every, every, yeah, this entire property has that same restriction.
Okay. Yeah. Greg?
Well, I, I appreciate this discussion, but I'm not sure what is confusing about this. We, we have a plot before us, or a preliminary plat before us. It appears to be applicable with all the city code requirements, as, as Mike went through in his presentation.
Which is number one in the, right.
Right, it's in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Mike quoted the comprehensive plan, it showed how this is in conformance with it, we can, we can see that. Public utilities and services are available, the city departments have weighed in on that. They're adequate to accommodate the proposed subdivision, and it's, nothing's been presented to show that it's detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. In fact, Nels' presentation very cogently showed how this kind of a thing is compatible, it promotes the general welfare. I appreciated that, that perspective. We don't have, what gets built on those is determined by the zoning code, the building code, we have, it's not up to us. I appreciate that nobody wants to buy a, a piece of property and have a view that they've grown accustomed to, taken up by a house or any, anything else, but we, we have no authority to deal with that. And it's frankly, I'll, since Nels isn't here, I'll, I'll take up his, his cause, but it's unrealistic to expect that you can buy something and expect that nothing is going to develop around it. That's, that's, Moscow's going to grow. We have to expect that, and the, the zoning has already been put in place. I don't know why it was put in place, I don't know why the restriction was put on, but there it is, and that's, that's not before us. I think this is a good use of the property there. I think that, again, the plot meets the relevant criterion standards that we're, that we are allowed to consider, the one, the only ones we're allowed to consider. So I would, I would move that we approve the preliminary plat with no conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second, Scott? Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
All right, so, um, we at this point need to, I have a, entertain a motion to direct staff to prepare relevant criteria, and maybe we should discuss what those are, if there are some that we would like to add besides the ones that are here?
I would move that we direct staff to prepare the findings.
Okay, I mean, arising from the discussion, are there any more that we should consider? Okay, thank you. Greg, is there a second?
I'll say.
Rob, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. All right. So our next item is yet another public hearing, and this one has to do with the rezon of an eight-point-four acre parcel at twenty-three seventy-five North Highway, um, North on Highway ninety-five, within the area of city impact. So in this case, we're just making recommendations because this falls to the county.
Correct.
Yeah. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So we have a rezon in the area city impact, twenty-three seventy-five North Highway ninety-five. The applicant's proposing to rezon this acreage from the agricultural forestry zone, which is currently zoned, to the suburban residential zone. So per our city of Moscow, Leita County Area-City Impact Agreement, the commission conducts one public hearing and then forwards a recommendation up to Leita County, and so that's why we're here tonight. So just to give you an overview of where this property is located, you can see the current city limits boundary here in purple. Uh, this is Highway ninety-five, and we have the area city impact boundary here in orange, so it's almost at the very edge of the area city impact boundary. Uh, this would be the, the singular property here. Just a closer view, you can see there's a few structures on this property. You have a, a single-family dwelling here, a common shared driveway, and there's also a machine shop that received a conditional use permit from the county about twenty-five years ago, and you also have an, an office building associated with machine shop there to the south. Adjacent properties are primarily agricultural to the west and to the south. You do have some single-family rural residential properties to the south, to the north. Uh, there is a mobile home park directly to the east across Highway ninety-five. Looking at the nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive plan, so we're currently in the process of renegotiating with Leita County, and hopefully we'll, the county will end up adopting our two thousand and nine comprehensive plan, or our, you know, updated twenty-seventeen comprehensive plan, I should say. But we're right now, we're currently under the previous agreement, so this is the nineteen ninety-nine comp plan. Uh, as you can see, that's the property at the center, currently surrounded, as well as, as designated as that property is agricultural. You have a low-density residential to the south, closer to the city limits boundary. Just wanted to cover the two thousand and nine comp plan as well as part of this, even though we're, we're going off the nineteen ninety-nine comp plan. This is in suburban residential designation for our current comp plan, and that's the lighter, lighter yellow that you see on the screen, and then you have this lighter shade of, of green, which is all agricultural. So nineteen ninety-nine comp plan, what the agricultural designation says, discusses farming, ranching, or forestry activity areas, land suited best there to, located either within or adjacent to the city boundary, or outside the city boundary within the ACI. Lands with this designation shall remain primarily undeveloped, except for single-family dwellings and accessory structures to those on large lots, and except for buildings related to agricultural, ranching, or forestry uses, which do not conflict with the rural aspects of uses previously specified. What our two thousand and nine comp plan says about the suburban residential designation, it's typically larger lot fringe area development. We usually see densities from about point eight-five to one point five-five dwelling units per acre, so pretty large lots. Uh, the areas are generally located, the northern portions of the city, obviously ninety-five, as well as Polk and, and Almond Mixed Road, where services are limited and topography's challenging, and the streets are currently developed to more of a rural standard. And then it points to the appropriate zone of suburban residential. Uh, looking at the zoning configuration of the area, so currently zone Ag Forest, as well as almost all the surrounding property, with the exception of another suburban residential zone directly to the east, which includes the mobile home park, as well as some rural single-family properties. Uh, the suburban residential designation, which this property will be proposed to be combined with, uh, this is currently eighteen acres in size for that zone. So this is the proposal to rezon it to suburban residential, so it'd be combined with that acreage to the east, as far as the zoning. Looking at the SR zone in the, in the zoning code, it's intended to create and protect permanent, single-family residential neighborhoods of very low densities, and then the following conditions shall apply to the designation of land in the SR zone. Um, looking at, uh, local streets that are reduced standard, not intended to provide primary access through the development with a higher density than is permitted with the SR. Usually says the minimum size of the SR zoning district shall be at least ten acres in size. And then it needs to be located in areas, obviously this is reflecting our previous nineteen ninety-nine comp plan, so it's pointing to agricultural or low-density residential for our comp plan map, and which, in this case, in the nineteen ninety-nine comp plan is, is currently designated as agricultural, so, um, currently consistent with that. Um, because the SR zone may interfere with higher density, more efficient land use, should be applied where such interference would be unlikely, as in areas in rural in character and not close to schools, public facilities, and shopping areas. And then, uh, just because of the reduced street standards permitted, wouldn't want it to interfere with future transportation needs in the area. And so you look at ninety-five, uh, which is a national highway, and then you look at any proposed arterial or collector designations, uh, and that, you know, this, this property wouldn't interfere with that. The, the proposed alternative highway bypass is, is north of this property, and then any other proposed collector arterial is further south. So you wouldn't run into any issues there. Uh, then this last portion just discusses, uh, you know, if it is to be redeveloped, that it be concurrent with street and utility improvements within that, within the ad area. So looking at the infrastructure, we have one vehicular approach from ninety-five. Uh, ITD would like it to remain that way, so just one, one approach. And then ninety-five's a national highway, it's twenty-four feet wide in this, in this section, paved with northbound, southbound travel lanes and minimal gravel shoulders on both sides. Uh, water is via private well on this property, and sewer is currently a private septic system. So staff's recommendation is the commission conduct a public hearing and put forth a recommendation of approval to Leita County of the proposed rezon from Ag Forest to suburban residential with no conditions. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions anymore.
I have, I have a question for you about the, the ten-acre restriction on suburban residential, and since ninety-five bisects, um, the, the property to the closest other SR zone, are they still counted as one zone, or, or not?
Yeah, we zoned to the middle of the street.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, and all right-ofaways in town.
Even, even when it's a highway.
You'll, you'll see older zones that don't do that, but that's our current practice to zone to the middle of the street.
Okay.
Uh, that property currently goes to the middle of the street on the east side, so it would be one contiguous zone, so we, yeah. We, we had looked at that earlier and, and determined that, yeah, it would, it would be one zone, even though it crosses the highway, just because we, we zoned to the middle of the street, so.
Are there questions?
Yeah. So access onto ninety-five, you were saying that it's, it's like kind of grandfathered in, that they get one access to ninety-five? I know that's, that's probably not even our bailiwick at all, but-
Yeah, it's Idaho Transportation Department, and since it's their highway, they determine whether or not you get access, and so they have the one shared access with the, the single-family house, as well as the, the commercial use there, and, uh, ITD would restrict that in the future. So it'd really be up to them whether or not they granted, you know, additional access. I don't think at this time the applicant wishes to have another access, it's just, ITD usually makes that statement saying that, you know, it's limited. Usually in these areas where there's speed limits of, you know, that, I think it's going up on forty-five in this area, um, usually they try to limit the approaches as much as possible to try to create the least amount of safety issues as possible.
Just from my own education, so if he wanted a second access onto the highway, he'd have to go through ITD, and I imagine-
Correct.
-through some serious hoops.
Yeah, it'd solely be up to ITD, so we would really have no say in that either, it'd just be ITD.
Yeah. Okay.
Other questions for Mike? Okay. Well, um, I think with that, we'll open the public hearing and ask, is there an applicant here to speak on behalf of the project, or, yes? So could you please come up forward and state your name and address?
I've been operating the shop shown on there since nineteen ninety. It, uh, I retired as of August, and basically I'm, uh, trying to sell the property in a way that gives me the best possible gain after twenty-seven years. Uh, one of my employees bought the majority of the machine tools in the shop and wishes to continue operating under the CUP there, and, uh, with good reason. If, if he had to find another place, it would cost probably forty thousand to move the equipment. And as a consequence- And as a consequence, what I'm hoping to do once it's rezoned suburban residential is cut the lower portion off of the rest of that right down the middle of the driveway. And I own an adjacent lot just south of there that's about one acre, and I was gonna combine that with part of the land behind the house. It's very level, superb place to build another house with the view and all the rest of it, which would make that other lot a lot more valuable to me. But basically, there would be, when I'm all done, there'd be two houses plus the separate shop facility. And as far as access, originally about a year before everything went down the tubes, I was gonna build another house myself up there, just to the west of that one lot, and sewer system is gonna go on that lot. But I didn't like the looks of the economy at that time, so I backed out of it, and it turned out it was a good idea. At any rate, I don't see any other real good use for the shops and all things, other than what they're being used for. Prior to the time I bought it, it was used as a repair facility for gravel trucks and like, for I don't know how many years, about 20 years or something like that. This would put at least one more house up on a very desirable lot. The individual that would wind up with the shop would wind up with about two and a half acres running from the shop to the highway. He could conceivably sell off a lot down near the highway as long as it wasn't more than 100 feet of frontage, because my understanding, things get complicated as far as right-ofways and one thing or the other for streets. And when I did look at putting in the other house, I talked to the highway department about coming off of the driveway I already had there, because it didn't make sense to me to have another inlet from the highway to other buildings, because if you check along there, you've got several driveways going in within just a half mile or less. And I think it's much more desirable to just come off the driveway and maybe make some improvements in that. That other lot, if you use it by itself, unless an access was supplied through some kind of an agreement, it would just put one more driveway coming in along with all the others, which I don't think's a good idea. Any questions?
Oh, Rob, I'm sorry, I keep hitting that. Anyone? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else would like to come up and speak about this project? All right, I will close the public hearing then and open it up to internal discussion or.
Chair, I move to approve the proposed rezone.
Is there a second to Brock's?
Yep, I'll second.
Kurt? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you. That's, so now with relevant, oh, we don't, do we have relevant criteria and standards? Oh, we do for a recommendation to the, okay.
Correct.
Okay, that one I wasn't sure about. So are there any additions to? Okay, that, I'm sorry, I'm on Sisters Brew, but let's take care. I guess, do we have any relevant criterion standards we'd like to recommend for this? Other than, I guess I would like to recommend that they do maintain just one access to 95, but maybe that's something that is out of our purview anyway, but.
Be up to IT.
Yeah, so that one's probably not.
We could say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we direct staff to prepare relevant criteria?
Right. Did you have?
You could make, they should make that recommendation as part of the motion of the relevant criteria. You can set up.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Name of the.
Mari Knott, Senior Planner, Leittah County, 522 South Adams. You could make that recommendation, and then it would be heard by the board, and they could choose at that time to enter into a development agreement that would require one singular access. So, just to clarify that.
Okay. Does anybody feel we need to do that, or should we leave it up to the county?
Sounds like lots of people are gonna be reviewing that.
Yeah, I would say leave it up to the county.
Okay, okay. That's, that sounds good. That's the only one I could really think of that would have any, you know, importance. But, okay, well, would somebody like to make a motion to direct Mike or staff to develop relevant criterion standards to go with this?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is yet another public hearing. This one is the proposed rezone of an approximately, oh, I'm sorry, whoops, no, I'm one page behind here. Where am I?
News table.
Okay, here we go. The, at this point, it's not, this is regarding the 18,000 square foot parcel on Elm Street, but it's just an approval of relevant criterion standards. Okay, right, gotcha. So there's no public hearing associated with it. All right. So Mike, do you wanna?
Yeah, I just, I should, you know, attach to your packet is just the relevant criterion standards. From our last meeting, we heard the rezone on Elm Street.
Right.
For the Campus Christian Center property, they were rezoning from R4 to neighborhood business, and the commission recommended approval to city council, and we're just following up after staff was directed to prepare the reason statement. We prepared that and attached it to your packet for your review, so.
Right. So does anybody have any comments on the ones that were prepared? I mean, they looked consistent with our discussion to me, so I don't know. The rest of you feel?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the relevant standards and criteria as prepared and presented by staff.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, great, seconds? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Abstentions? No? All right. So we're, now we have the item eight, which is the use table ordinance, definition's an off-street parking table. I'm still having a hard time getting used to this agenda format. It's like the.
It's a little different.
Yeah, and I just like the simple one. Yeah, a lot of words to absorb.
So I think I handed out the definitions section, and that was one of the last two parts that we needed to figure out before I think we were ready for the whole, you know, update to the use table and the zoning code and the restructuring of chapters one through four. And we had moved the definitions section to chapter one, and we'd gone through, I'd handed that out last time, we had made a number of changes, we had converted a lot of the definitions over to NIACS definitions last time. And so we had done that, but there are some current definitions that maybe aren't uses within the code or in the definitions section, and a lot of them are confusing because they're similar terms, and then they're used interchangeably throughout the zoning code. And so I just wanted to go through kind of what we've been working on with those definitions, and they mainly revolve around structures and buildings, which you would think is probably the same thing, but our zoning code defines those a little bit differently. I just wanted to start out with kind of this opening paragraph to the definitions section, just to point out that, you know, we have some direction on how you use, you know, one word means another word. And so the word lot includes the word plot, the word building includes the word structure, and the word shall is mandatory, not directory. So it just gives you some guidance when you're navigating the definitions section. So just thinking about the word building includes the word structure. These are the list of what we currently have for buildings and structures that we have defined within the definitions section. So we define accessory building, we've got accessory structure, we define building, carport, we've got a detached building, private garage, and then we have structure, and we got temporary structure. So we got a few structures, you know, we really have three structures, accessory structure, structure, and temporary structure. And then buildings, you know, it's, when you go through these definitions, it's pretty confusing. So accessory building's a subordinate building, use of which is incidental to the primary use, so, or the main use, the main building on the same lot. So you have a main house, and you've got a garage, that's an accessory building. Accessory structure, you know, means a lot of things. Usually it's same thing, it's, you know, some type of subordinate structure to a principal structure, a house. So it also includes awning, steps, porches, carports, garages, and storage buildings. So we've got some overlap between these definitions. And then it says, consider detached if located more than two feet from the principal or primary structure. But we also have, you know, some contradictory language, because we do have detached building down here, which says a building surrounded on all sides by open space, but yet we still dictate it's gotta be two feet away. So, you know, these are the things that we've been dealing with over the years that we're trying to clarify with the, with these types of definitions. And then we go on to how we measure the size limitations as just being the building footprint. So you have, you know, say a garage, it's 1,000 square feet, maybe you have 1,000 square foot limitation on a garage. It's really just the building footprint itself, so if somebody could put a lean-to off the side of it, that doesn't count as the total square footage of the garage. So that's kind of oddly placed in there. I think we'll maybe look at putting that in a different section, but I think it's gonna expand the scope of this chapters one through four so much that we'll probably just leave it there for the time being, but it really shouldn't be there. It should be in some other section that deals with accessory structures and not hidden within the definition section. And then we go into building, which means any structure, so we're, you know, still using all those terms interchangeably throughout the definitions, excluding all forms of vehicles, even immobilized, so it's pretty much any structure having a roof is a building. So we don't say that if you have a, you know, maybe a caboose, train caboose, and it's immobilized, you can use that as a structure or building. So that's why that's in there. Use is entirely within an enclosed building, so, you know, I think they have this in that definition, you know, it's not really a definition, it's more of a standard for a building. So we use that term in certain portions of the code, like in motor business, you have to conduct certain uses and they have to be entirely within a building. So I think that's why we have this statement in there about, really what that means to be entirely within an enclosed building, just so you, you know, we have something to point to when somebody has something, you know, maybe halfway in, halfway out of a building, and whether or not that's not, you know, actually enclosed or not. We have carport, which has worked, you know, fairly well. The issue is we don't really, there's only maybe one place that we have carport in our code, and we don't treat those differently than a garage. So there's really no reason why to define a carport in opposed to a, maybe a garage structure. So that's, you know, bit of the inconsistency we've been running into with that. Detached building, we talked about that. Private garage, you know, really would be included within maybe a definition of a building or accessory structure. So, you know, I think that in order to make sense of all these interrelated definitions that mean similar things, you know, what we propose to do is restructure a little bit and combine, I think, some of these terms. So looking at eliminating accessory building and combining really the subordinate building portion down here to accessory building or structure, so that's another thing, you know, within our definitions section, we always have like the building or structure is the term, and then accessory, usually a comma accessory. So, you know, if we're gonna have all the, you know, we have building or structure listed, you shouldn't have to go all the way back to the A's in order to come up with a, another, you know, term with a built, with a building. So we'd just be restructuring that a little bit. We're gonna really try to keep what the building definition is, but add building or structure to that definition, just so we can clear up this inconsistency. And then looking at accessory building or structures is more of a combination of, you know, taking accessory building, put a subordinate building or structure, the use of which is incidental to the use of the main building on the same lot, attached to or located adjacent to a home or on the same lot, including awning, steps, porches, carports, garages, storage buildings, and then keeping the size limitations, defining that it's just the building footprint, not the land area occupied by the such accessory structure. So that'd really just be keeping, similar to what we have, but restructuring it to have it be one definition instead of multiple ones. And then we come down to detached building or structure, and then we just take this portion that was currently under accessory structure to put that there. You know, it'd make the most sense to keep the two feet, but just to clarify that it's not just surrounded on all sides, but it does have to be located more than two feet away. Since we don't really use carport, or we don't have different standards for carports than we do anything else, we didn't really see a need to keep carport under a definition. So we'd propose to strike that. And then what was formerly a private garage, we, in the current code, we have accessory structures, and the term is including private garages and workshops. In the past, we've had some people challenge us, just because they said they weren't building a garage, they're building a workshop, you know, so they're not subject to the size limitations of the 1,000 square feet. So we would just simply clarify that by saying private garage and/or workshop, and then just have really the, a similar definition that we had before, building or portion thereof designed or used for the storage of one or more vehicles, or to serve as a private workshop space for residents of the premises. So just be combining that and clarifying that up, and then since we're combining structure and building, we wouldn't really need these definitions either. Temporary structure, there's really no need for that either, because we don't draw a distinction between a temporary structure and a permanent structure.
So Mike, something like the staged gazebo at East City Park, you would, I guess that would just fall in building or structure?
Yeah.
You kept the.
Sure.
Example, yeah.
Yeah, it would, you know, any structure having a roof, excluding all forms of vehicles, even though immobilized. So, yeah, it would be, it'd be a structure.
Right, because, you know, obviously the use is not entirely enclosed in that type of function, so. I was just wanting to make sure we.
Yeah, well, you know, it'd probably be a principal structure, because it is a park, you know, it, I think it could go either way, you know, it could be an accessory or principal, the way you looked at it, but either way, yeah, it would be a building or a structure. So that's how we propose to clean up, you know, those inconsistencies with the definitions. Looking at the use, or the parking table, wanted to kind of go back, I know that we had put it in the new format and included the NIACS definition. had put it in the new format and included the NIACS definitions and assigned some standards for those as far as number of required parking spaces. I just wanted to go back and revisit in our comprehensive plan what we say about parking. So we have that section that discusses parking, and, you know, we have a recommendation from the comp plan in the introductory paragraph, saying that the city's parking requirements are set out in the city's zoning code, which stipulates the minimum number of off-street parking stalls that must be provided for various uses. Many of the requirements are at least in part based on the number of employees on premises, which can make plan review and code enforcement very difficult. The city should periodically review parking requirements to ensure that they are meeting the generated parking demand and are being easily administered. So, you know, we have various uses, you know, going through the table where, for instance, you know, we have dormitories or fraternity sororities or cooperative houses, it's one per two occupants. So, you know, you have a snapshot of a point in time when maybe the fraternity or sorority's built, and they say that, well, they have, they're gonna have fifty occupants, they're gonna have fifty, you know, fraternity or sorority members. And then at some point in time, you know, they build the parking lot for that, and then they end up growing by however many members, and all of a sudden, they're out of compliance. So it just, it really creates a situation that is really unenforceable, and, you know, doesn't really allow for additional parking to be created for the expansion of members, and it's really hard for us to track. And so, you know, that's why they make that, that recommendation to go to more of a standard where it's based upon square footage, and so you can easily track that. I mean, employees come and go, and there's always fluctuation between numbers of employees, so that would be the recommendation. So, I think, you know, part of this is going back and looking at some of these standards and revisiting those. So we have, you know, like, our manufacturing sector, you know, a lot of it's one per two employees on maximum work shift, but not less than one per one thousand square feet. So, maybe we look at just eliminating the one per two employees. So, we'll be doing a little bit more research, I guess, on some of the other jurisdiction standards for these uses, to try to move from the per employee or per staff member, per student standard to more of a, you know, per square footage standard. So, we'll be going back, and so this is, you know, same here with coffee espresso stand, you know, maybe, they're all about the same size anyway, so maybe we just get a standard square footage and just go one per such-and-such square footage, and that will accommodate for the employee. We did talk about, I think when we were looking at the off-street parking standards at the council level, we had a gentleman bring up the discrepancy between retail sales, I think we had talked about that before. Looking at, you know, the retail sales category, we've got these different tiers. So if it's less than five thousand square feet, it's one per four hundred square feet. If you have five thousand to twenty-five thousand square feet, it's ten plus one per four hundred in excess of five thousand, and then if you go above twenty-five thousand square feet, it's sixty spaces plus one per three hundred in excess of twenty-five thousand. So, if you look at kind of the math, so let's say somebody did a four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square foot building, you're looking at thirteen spaces, but if you go up to five thousand, you're at ten. So, you know, it doesn't really make sense, the tiers or the transitions there. So, we, that was already on our radar to clarify, but, you know, I think it just gets confusing when you end up going to this tiered model, and why that it's not just, you know, maybe just a standard one per four hundred for the, you know, the entire category.
No matter what.
And I think the reality is that, once you start getting up into this, you know, these big boxes that are over a hundred thousand square feet, they have their parking requirements that they abide by anyway, and it's well above anything that we require. So you look at the Walmarts, or, you know, these large boxes, they end up going at least a hundred and fifty percent, or to two hundred percent of what we required, because they park it for Black Friday shopping. And so, you never really run into, they have their own standard, you know, they rarely pay attention to what our standard is, because it's so much smaller than what they, what they need, or what they dictate for their chain or their store. So, I would, you know, just on first blush, I think that we would probably look to moving towards more of just a one per four hundred regardless of the size of the structure. So I think that that's where we're leaning from there. But yeah, you look at, so twenty-four, so this tier, twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, fifty-eight spaces, but then you go one square foot above that to twenty-five, then all of a sudden, you bump up two spaces. So, we've got a little bit of issue with those tiers right now, so I think we'd be looking at just maybe doing one, one standard for that. So then, you know, some other things that we just need to, you know, look at the number of employees, and then, you know, how we can translate in, that into something a little bit easier like square footage. So, we're gonna work on that, and then hopefully bring you an updated table next time, and with some recommendations as to changes, so.
So, when you get to something like hotels and motels, it does seem to make sense to have one per room rather than, you know, hotel rooms vary in size, but usually the number of occupants doesn't-
Yeah, that makes sense, but, yeah, I mean, the rooms, those are pretty much gonna stay stagnant, you know, they're gonna be fixed. But employees, depends. I mean, it, you know, it, a lot of it depends on the economy with, you know, budget cuts and all that, and, so yeah, it's just a standard that is, I don't think is very accurate, so. Any other questions?
That's good. Is that all you have on use tables? Okay. So, on the shared reading discussion, we had quite a bit of recommended reading, and we had a little bit of a discussion and decided maybe tonight, in light of the fact that I thought we had three public hearings, that we had two, but we still had two, that we focused on the Urban Land Institute article about principles for rethinking the mall, and just wondered if anybody had a chance to read it, and what your comments might be in terms of looking at our malls and, you know, how they might warrant repurposing at some future date if things don't improve, or whatever.
It's kind of interesting, because we're already sort of in an experiment of repurposing in some ways, and we've seen that on the east side. I think something ultimately will happen over at the Palouse Mall. But one of the things that struck me about this article was that there's this trend to making these areas look like you're walking down an old-fashioned Main Street. And I'm thinking, okay, well, we've already got that, we've got one of the best walking-
We have a real one.
We have a real one. So, how do you repurpose or redesign a mall without-
Competing with it.
Competing with our downtown.
Well, and I think a lot of those, I mean, one of the first ones was Mashpee Commons in Massachusetts, and I had a chance to actually visit it last fall, after talking about it in urban theory class for many years, I got to see it in the flesh. And in that case, it was, I think it's really becoming more common in places that don't have any there-there, and are trying to, like in suburbia, where there isn't, hasn't really ever been an historic town center like we have. And it's a way to develop an identity for that community. But I think, so I, yeah, I agree with you, that how many competing downtowns can we have? We have a real one. But, maybe the, some of the ideas of making malls attractive to people, as magnets to people for other purposes, I mean, what crossed my mind, and it's a can of worms to even maybe open, but, you know, if we had lots of empty space sitting there in a ghost mall for a while, why not have something like the hockey rink go in there? And then, then all of a sudden, you have an activity center, and other things start to blossom around it. And that's just one use that I could, you know, think of, but, I don't, so, it seems like it's a, one thing that struck home was that it's a different solution depending on the community's circumstances, economically, et cetera.
Well, you've seen our mall transition with all the facade improvements.
Right.
Right? So like every store on that south side that has come in, you know, Smokey Mountain, you know, Jo-Ann's Fabric ended up redoing the entrance on the east side, you know, just to have their facade. You had the restaurant that was there, Super China buffet, you know, a lot of these sprint, I think Verizon went in there and did a facade improvement. So, I think you're starting to see a lot of the, you know, maybe not the Main Street model, but instead of just going on the inside of malls to be able to shop, you know, having this presence on the outside, you know, more towards the community instead of just containing on the inside of the mall, so.
Well, and also, it used to be all parking against the highway, the Pullman Highway, and gradually, those pads have been developed with buildings, so there is more, it's not the sea of parking that it quite used to be, with some connections. The other thing I was thinking about with our community, I mean, we're always gonna, if the universities continue to grow, we're gonna always need more housing, and it seems like having that, that use integrated in, as more of a, you know, a multi-purpose sort of place, might be something to think about, you know, if, if the trends continue towards Amazon and retail continues to decline, and that, you know, there's not the demand, and that's, I'm not a market expert, so I don't know what's gonna happen here, but, but you certainly see that sort of gradual erosion. I thought it was interesting that, you know, that the loss of, stores like Macy's didn't necessarily have so much to do with our immediate community, but it's happening all over the country that they're closing, or Sears is back closing stores again, and, you know, so, is that trend gonna continue, and is everything gonna be pretty much online, and if so, what happens to these spaces so that, you know, we've had a movie theater empty for fifteen years now, that, you know, it's kind of sad, because it's taken up real estate and it's just an eyesore. And, so, what are the, you know, what are some of your thoughts on?
Well, I think I've mentioned this before, that in Winslow, where we spend a bunch of time, they've been kind of getting economically kicked in the teeth for about forty years. And so they have the big empty Kmart, and the big empty supermarket, things like that, and they are indeed absolute eyesores. And that's the lesson for me, is that we've got a, I think we've got it pretty well covered on abandoning a larger retail establishment, but boy, you sure don't want them to end up just sitting there empty. It's, I mean, it can suck down an entire neighborhood, I think, quite easily when it's just there.
It's been kind of interesting, because when I think about the changes that have taken place out at the Palouse Mall over the years, even before we moved here twenty years ago, they've done a pretty good job of losing a business and bringing a new one in, and repurposing that space or reconfiguring the space. And I have no idea what's gonna happen with that Macy's space, and I don't think anybody does at this time, but they historically have done a pretty good job of recruiting, and I don't know about new uses, but certainly new businesses. And the marketing piece in this article, and knowing your market, our market certainly is different than what Kurt's describing in Winslow, where, and I just saw another news piece the other night on a business report, where you have totally abandoned malls. I mean, it would, you'd take the Palouse Mall or east side, and the entire mall would be closed. And I don't think that's happening here, so I'm relatively confident that they're gonna continue to cycle through the businesses and be relevant. Gosh, all you have to do is go over to that mall on a game weekend, and you can't even find a parking place over there, and that's good, I guess. The other thing that I was interested in was how they were dealing with parking in some of these reconfigurations, a little bit more creative than acres of asphalt. And I like that concept. I don't know how it could be implemented, or if it would even make an economic sense particularly, but I like, and you kind of talked about it a little bit, with these pads that are getting developed, which helps a little bit, but it would really be nice if some of the parking areas were a little bit more walking-friendly, for example, or had some other landscaping that might make it-
And I think that's how the, you see some of the mall designs, redesigns evolving towards more of a Main Street approach, because they impose a street grid essentially through, and externalize a lot of the buildings and create public outdoor spaces as well as indoor, and so, it's looking at the model that has succeeded for two hundred years, you know, in terms of pedestrian mobility, and diminishing the presence of the car being, it's more in balance with. And so I think, I think that's why they, you know, and, you know, what frustrates me about the, if I owned the Palouse Mall, I would look at some way of getting north-south movement through it in a few places, so it's not so, you know, so you're not going around one end and all the way, you know, I mean, I guess there are more outdoor entrances, but I mean more of a corridor kind of, but that's just me, I don't know.
You know, it occurs to me too, that designing a mall, which I don't know how to do, and don't really want to know how to do, but weather in a particular region has an impact. And so you make all these outdoor-type access points, and then you have winter country, or, and it's puzzled me, I don't know if you've ever been to University Village in Seattle, near the university, and it's all, it's not a mall, it's all outdoor.
It's like a shopping center with lots of buildings.
Yeah, but with the weather that they have over there, you know, I think, hmm, I was there a few weeks ago, and I thought, oh, am I gonna have to bring my umbrella with me, because I'm going store today? So, it is kind of nice to have a mall where you don't worry about the weather, but I guess that may or may not be relevant to our discussion.
Well, it's, well, you know, what, that point of design parking is more than a ratio, that you are, being more creative in the way they pocket the parking almost, rather than having it all be one contiguous area, is, and, you know, what really has helped is the development of the pads out on the highway, because it's broken up the parking a whole lot more than it was thirty years ago when I first came here, so.
One thing I think this illustrated was that the whole concept of malls is, it's never really been a static thing, it's always been dynamic.
Good point.
They're al, I mean, we see it here at the Palouse Mall. Every time there's some, a new store comes in, you know, Macy's, they redesign a lot of the fronts, when, you know, Jo-Ann Fabric, they redesigned that whole corner, the Smokey Mountain Pizza took that whole corner and expanded it, University Village, that mall was, well, and I'm from that area, so lots of malls over there basically have been rebuilt entirely from what they started out as.
I think Northgate was the first enclosed mall, wasn't it?
Northgate was, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
And for the reasons you mentioned.
Yeah. And even it looks totally different, and they're still, still working on it, so it's, the ones that, it seems that the ones that die, that close up and just shut down, are the ones that haven't evolved. They're the ones that just kind of stayed whatever the trend was at the time, and people stopped going there, because there were so many more attractive places to go. And it's clearly the developers who are paying attention, well, they are paying attention, and are trying to keep up with trends, trying to keep people coming in so that their tenants have good shoppers, and they've really, I mean, they've come a long, long way. We were in Colleyville last weekend, and, down in Texas, and drove by this place, and oh, there's a little, little town center there. And it was a shopping mall, but it was designed to look like Main Street USA. You wouldn't have known the difference if you hadn't thought about it, so.
Right. Well, I think maybe from our perspective, you know, some malls have become outmoded because a brand-new one is built a mile away, and then another one. And so, limiting the amount of available zoned commercial space, so that doesn't happen, so we don't, you know, sprawl mall all over the place, I guess it would be. And it seems like the- And it seems like the Moscow Mall had to remake itself when the Palouse Mall was built. That was before my time. I know some of you may have lived here when that happened, but it certainly put it in economic stress and it, they've had to be creative to dig their way out of it. And if you were to yet plan out another spot for a mall, it would probably put the Palouse Mall six feet under. So, you know, having that, you know, that limit to the amount of commercial available space that doesn't exceed the community capacity, I guess is where I'm going with it, that you don't.
Well, especially since it seems that, you know, people are not going to go to Walmart 15 years from now. They'll be sitting on their computer and having Walmart bring stuff to them, so.
I've thought of them being, becoming distribution centers where you don't go to a big supermarket and pick out your Kellogg's or whatever that you might pick out, go to a corner store and pick out your meat, but everything else is online and it's delivered to, you know, so maybe they become the storage facilities for, and they don't, you know.
My wife will still be going to Target from 30 years from now. I think, you know, with the mall reading and looking at our own Palouse Mall, I think a lot of the businesses that have kinda croaked, Kmart, Macy's, Sears, these are businesses that have not evolved with the youth of today. I think if we, you know, we get a Target, we get an A and like an H and M or something inside our mall, that it will be successful. Most of the stores that we've had in there, they're just too old. Like, they just don't resonate with the youth. They don't even resonate with our emerging professionals and also our young families. So it will be interesting how the economy kinda drives that. And hopefully, you know, we can get some more relevant stores and industries. Like, we are getting Alta, which is a big deal. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but that's really big with my generation. And we make a half of the workforce. So I think as long as Moscow is receptive to these younger businesses that have caught fire, that will do okay.
I think that's one of the advantages of being a university town. You kind of are perpetually renewing the young people in the community. And so you do have to, as a business owner, you have to be relevant to the turnover. So it is a kind of a self-renewing, but that's what you say is a good point.
Yeah, it's like with, definitely with every action, there's a reaction and that's how they've kept going, the way they have, yeah, as long as they have, so. Any other thoughts or did we?
It was an interesting subject and I, as we started reading through this stuff, I was struck by how many articles and news pieces I've been seeing about malls and, for the most part, it made me feel like, you know, by golly, things are going a lot better here than maybe in a lot of other places.
Well, one of the things that in the last few years that has really changed in planning in a lot of suburban communities as they try to urbanize is, you know, you had the mall as one big mass with a big parking around it and then an arterial going around it in a lot, not so much here, but in many communities. And so the effort to puncture, you know, puncture through that with street systems that connect to surrounding neighborhoods so you don't just have an auto-oriented destination that multimodal is better accommodated if the access is integrated into neighborhoods. I mean, there were even examples of malls that needed to deconstruct all the fences they put around between themselves and neighborhoods. So people had to literally go out their subdivision around and through the arterial and collector streets and get out on the highway to come to the other side of the fence. And so I think there are a lot of strategies that are good examples out there for communities that have that condition. And it's, I would say places that have less of a sense of place than we have with our, you know, we have a much stronger identity and we have more cross-community sort of circulation, but those, there are a lot of good examples of remaking those kinds of sort of isolated island malls or whatever you wanna call them. But our circumstances are different. I agree, it's sort of trying to find businesses that target the market. And I've been frustrated since I was a young person, you know, because in terms of our, you know, what's in our mall, I always felt that it catered to 15-year-olds and, you know, so that's the other side of the coin too. So then you go online or you go out of town and you shop. So, or go up to Spokane or whatever. Any, well, I guess, have we exhausted the subject already?
I had one child graduate from high school and another get married between, since our last meeting, so I didn't get to pay as much attention to this as I wanted to, but I think there'd be a lot of, I'd like to keep it on the shared reading agenda for maybe another meeting because I think there's.
Yeah, we only hit one article.
Just one article, yeah.
There was a whole article that I tried to download on my phone because I was traveling myself and it was the toolbox one and I need to go back, but it's really how you set up, I guess it was the tool, did you find that article or did I, or where did that one?
Maybe my kid, I can't remember.
Yeah, I, you know, I was away for two weeks and myself traveling overseas and so I kind of looked at a bunch of articles right before I left and then dumped it on Rob. And so we do need more.
I think it'd be great.
Yeah, discussion so we can keep going.
I think there's three articles, Anne, there's three articles that are posted out there in the shared reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them is actually a link to several others, the toolbox you were talking about.
Oh, that's, that's right.
And I haven't had a chance to dig into all the threads that that one has yet, so. Maybe we could, maybe we could look at that one, or did you have another one?
No, no, that'd be great.
Look at that one for the next time, yeah. And anything else you might, I mean, if you Google, you know, repurposing malls, you'll find 100 articles come up. So it was, there's a lot of examples for sure, but.
Madam Chair, if I could recommend a subject for future readings, the discussion that we had today previously regarding vistas, that was a discussion about it that really wasn't about it, I'm very interested in reading how communities have sought to protect views within their neighborhoods and how they have made that feasible in a sense. Because to me, it's difficult because we try to govern the type of materials people use in certain places and things like that. So to me, a vista could be governed to an extent and especially how certain new developments could affect a portion of the general welfare, probably not the entire general welfare at large, but a portion with their economic property that they own. Like, that vista probably adds significant economic value to their property. And the last thing I want is any sort of tyranny of the majority over the minority, but it's difficult for me, especially with a certain project, because I want cheap housing because I wanna live here. But I definitely am curious how other communities, if there are any, have been able to regulate some type of ordinance or regulation or what have you that protects vistas or views or, I would just be interested in learning more. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but after today's discussion, I would be more than happy to learn some more about that.
So are there, any comments on that or?
Be interesting to read about. It's, seems like an incredible can of worms.
I know. Well, I think of places that I'm familiar with that do control height and view and a lot of times it's within a development.
Mm-hmm.
So you purchase a lot and then there's a covenant, there's covenants over that development and they, you know, have water views and that's part of the real estate value, certainly in California, Washington Coast, you name it. We don't have quite that environment and we don't have that many neighborhoods. How many neighborhoods do we have that have covenants, do we have?
We don't keep track of them, so I'm not, I'm not sure. We have very few homeowners associations that, there may be a lot of neighborhoods that have covenants, CCNRs, but there's very few that have active HOAs that would enforce the CCNRs. I guess my only experience is, you know, where I worked for a short time briefly before coming here was in Park City area outside of, you know, Salt Lake. And they had, in the whole county that I worked for, they had a ridgeline overlay ordinance. And so it all depends on what you're trying to protect, right? So some people protect streams and low-lying areas and wetlands and then some people protect ridge lines, so they don't allow ridge lines to be developed. And so that was the case in the Park City area is that there'd be ridgeline overlay zones and then so these prominent ridge lines would have an overlay on it. And then anybody that wanted to build a house that was close to that ridge line, they'd actually have to go and the view shed was from the highway corridors. So we'd have one planner with a pole as tall as the house was gonna be at the very peak of the roof, this tall white pole with a flag on top of it. And then you'd have another one driving along the highway to see if the pole with a flag encroached upon the ridge line. And so, you know, that's what you get into. And it was just, they wanted to preserve the mountain character and they wanted to preserve the ridge lines of the mountains and they didn't want a giant three-story house, you know, protruding above the ridge lines. And if you go up on 80 right by Kimball Junction, you see a house that I think a planner had screwed up on and approved or something. They have this house that's right on this hill and it's this giant square glass, I mean, beautiful house, just giant square glass house and, you know, that's really what they were trying to protect with the ridge lines. And that one just happened to predate the ordinance or go through mistakenly, you know.
We had Randall Arant, who's a planner who does cluster communities, come and do a workshop with our city council and Lata planning and Moscow planning and et cetera. It's been quite a few years now, but we went out, we, a local farmer out, at that point, just probably in the area of impact now, probably maybe inside the city, was kind of near Orchard Avenue, had, we used his site to develop a, you know, clustered community and workshop settings with this integrated group of people. And one of the big points that he came out with is no ridge top development. And of course, the county went, there was ridge top development all over the place and there didn't used to be. Historically, everybody built down low because they couldn't have long driveways going to the top of ridges and the farmhouse is are down low where the water was, et cetera. And then that's all changed. And what was interesting when we stood on this property looking back towards Moscow and Fort Russell is that unlike most of the county where there's ridge top development, Fort Russell is on a big hill, but the trees top. They topped the hill. So that's what you see. You don't see the houses crowning the hill. And it was kind of an interesting revelation that, oh, we've had ridge top development ever since this place was initially developed. It's just that they planted trees and they grew up and covered the houses. But then, of course, all the views went with that, you know, so now you don't have the prime views of Moscow mountain that Fort Russell probably originally had when it was developed, so. So, yeah, we do have some view issues for sure, but a lot of times the, you know, view control is really in developmentally restrictive settings, at least where I've seen it in action. So I don't, we don't seem to go for that much restriction in this community, so I don't, I don't know.
And some, I mean, the restriction about one story is really poorly written because, you know, if you're governed in by the code of, well, yeah, it's one story, it has a 34-foot cathedral ceiling.
Right, or it has a 16-foot wall that slopes down to a, or something like that. But, yeah, that is, because usually there's a height limit associated with a one-story, like we have with 35 feet, you know, in most of residential zones. So that, that is kind of interesting that there isn't a height limit. And that might be something that we should've thought about, you know, as a.
I would like to speak about that in the future, most definitely. To me, I think that's something that could be abused pretty easily.
It seems like in the context of affordable housing, that would be.
Probably not, probably less likely, but just given another situation, you know, what if it's a PUD, you know, where developers do have substantial funds where they can make these beautiful cathedral ceiling, single-level houses? So I don't know, just maybe for the, but better safe than sorry, every time.
But I think almost all of the code now is defined in heights and feet and not single-story kind of language, right?
Yeah, it's just a, you know, a poor condition, a poor wording of a condition that was placed upon, you know, 20-plus years ago. And so you're just left with dealing with that condition without having to go back and amend the rezone in order to get it off there or stipulate something else, you know. And it's, you know, usually zoning where those conditions are imposed, but, you know, you also think about the person that purchased the property with that zoning. And then, you know, that's more of an economic hit because all of a sudden it's restricted to one story, whereas the underlying zone, you can go all the way up to three, four stories. And, I mean, that's a pretty severe economic impact to somebody that owns that property and was abiding by the zone, you know.
I wonder if that would show up in a title search. It probably wouldn't, would it? I mean, it could come as a complete surprise to somebody to find out they're limited to one story.
Yeah, it, it could, yeah. I mean, usually it's some type of, it's recorded on the property in some fashion, so, yeah.
Well, and we know everyone always discloses everything. They sell property.
I was just thinking, you have some lots that we looked at in Port Townsend and they all said 17-foot max. And it was, it was a neighborhood decision as the properties were subdivided that they didn't want their view blocked, so they set a 17-foot restriction. And I don't think it was in the city code so much as in the, even though it was not in a neighborhood, gated neighborhood or anything, but just restrictions put on the property that the subdivider put on.
That the owner of the property just put stipulations on it?
Yeah, because they were up the hill. They didn't, they figured out somehow that if, when they had some lots down or subdivided some land down below them, that if anybody went over 17 feet, they'd lose their view. So they just put that restriction on it, so.
Good way to do it.
Yeah, so. And then there's view corridors too. I mean, you know, you see that in California in smaller towns where they try to keep those open and that's probably through height restriction, I guess.
Well, a lot of the big cities like Seattle has view, you know, even Coeur d'Alene, I think the, I think it's limited. I think somebody was telling me the other day that, you know, you have right along Sherman Avenue, that's why you don't see anything above like two stories in height, is because, you know, I think Hagadon has control or had some type of mechanism where they restricted the height and it was only the Coeur d'Alene hotel that could go all the way up to 16 floors or whatever.
Yeah, no, but the city, yeah, put a restriction for a long time on height after that hotel was built, but then they ran out of land because they're up, literally up, we don't have this problem exactly, they're up against every single surrounding municipalities, the lines. And so the city made a conscious effort, the planning department, to densify because that was their only option to accommodate growth. So they allowed higher, smaller lots, 25-foot wide lot development and also higher buildings, you know, that you see those high rises now for housing that weren't allowed 15, 20 years ago, but, so. So economics drives a lot of that for sure. And the value of land in California, you know, people wanna protect their $2 million view so they get it worked into the codes, but.
Beautiful Flagstaff, Arizona, it's grown out to the national forests on all sides, so there is no option of annexes or anything.
Oh, interesting.
And so lots are, lots are truly incredibly expensive.
Yeah, or Boulder with its green belt and everything being inside, the green belt forces more densification, yeah. Well, interesting topics. Yeah, so we'll get that on our radar. Maybe if you wanna research some articles for a future, I think we'll try to handle this topic that we have in front of us for at least one more meeting or two, depending on what we find, but, yeah, if you wanna get that on the future radar, that'd be great. All right, medium adjourned. Are we done?
Sounds good.
What time is it?